Call to order the regular business meeting of the Board of Education for Monday, February 25th. If I could ask everyone to please stand and recite the Pledge of Allegiance.
Pledge of Allegiance. To the flag of the United States of America and to the republic which stands on one nation, united, indivisible, in the great and just and strong.
Alright, roll call please.
Jim Batson.
Here.
Pat Rudy.
Here.
Lisa Hassel.
Here.
Kevin Huber. Scott Moose.
Here.
Karen Lundstedt. Casey Rudy.
Here.
Okay, so we know Kevin Huber and Karen Lundstedt out for the evening. Let's see, our agenda today, we will have, we'll open it up briefly for anybody from the public who would like to speak. We'll have a brief student recognition tonight, it looks like. We'll have updates from our student school board representatives. And then, our superintendent is ill this evening, so filling in is Brian Kelly. He'll share some good news and give us updates on a number of capital projects. We'll approve the consent vote agenda, which we reviewed earlier this month in committee. We'll have a brief update from Facilities and Finance and Programming Personnel. And then, I'm not aware of anything on property, correct? And nothing on SEDO, KINLISB, anything?
I don't think so.
Okay. Alright, so then, after the PMP meeting, we will adjourn. Alright, any questions, comments? Alright, would anybody from the public like to speak tonight? Oh, that's right, Karen's not here. Alright, can I ask you, Lisa, Secretary of Program? That just means you have to sign off on a bunch of stuff next week. Okay. Anybody from the public? Can't see them all. Okay. Alright, so non-educational presentation, student recognition.
Good evening. We on?
Yep.
Good evening, I'm Tom Klenis, Principal of Libertyville High School. President Rudy, since Prentice Lee is sick tonight, John and I would like to propose a few changes if we could run that by the agenda for this evening. Boss is away, got some ideas.
You're on TV.
Oh darn it, that's right, he's probably watching from home too. Sorry, Klenis. Alright, so, we have a couple of presentations tonight of some fantastic Wildcats. And we're gonna start out with our wrestlers. So I'm gonna bring up our first-year wrestling coach, Coach Dale Eggers, who is gonna make some presentations about two of our All-State wrestlers. Okay.
It is always a thrill to be here for just one All-Stater, but this year we have two. I'm gonna bring up Danny Pacino, Michael Gunther. Come on up, you guys. Danny, second time that he's earned All-State. He got third, uh, second place, he got third place a year ago, he got second place this year. Close loss in the final. Michael Gunther, three times downstate, first time he placed. Got third in state at 138, went 4-1. Very close decision in the semis. These guys really did us proud. Michael is off to the University of Illinois next year to wrestle for them. Danny's got one more shot at the title, and then he goes off to the University of Illinois. So we get a nice connection with those guys. Thank you very much.
Okay, so now, we move from wrestling to our All-State Theater students. These students were selected as among the best thespians in the state, both for onstage and for behind the stage. So I'm gonna bring up our Department Supervisor for Fine Arts, Mr. Dustin Helby, and he's gonna talk about our All-State Theater students.
Good evening. The Illinois High School Theater Festival is the world's largest non-competitive theater festival in the world. So for three days, in the first weekend of January, we bring together educators, students, and theater professionals from across the state, actually from across the country. And they participate in workshops, showcase performances, and the highlight of the entire weekend is our All-State performance. And at Libertyville High School, we had three students who were selected for that production. The first one being Albert Sterner in the ensemble of In the Heights. Next, we have Laura Hinz, who was part of the tech crew and did props for the production. And last but not least was Clarice Austin, who was in the ensemble for In the Heights and dance captain. And in addition, I forgot this last year, so I'm gonna mention it now and hopefully make up for it. She was also the dance captain for the production of Big Fish last year as well. So Clarice.
Alright, so from our All-State wrestlers and our All-State Theater students, we now turn to our All-State musicians. And once again, Dustin Helby.
Before we go to music, I had forgotten to mention, in addition to our outstanding students, we actually had two District 128 production staff members, who are here about this tonight, who are involved in In the Heights. And that is Jen Phelan, who was the scenic designer, and also Kevin Holly, who was the technical director for In the Heights. So maybe we can do a picture, once we're all done, with everybody, Vernon Hills, Libertyville, together. So, now onto music. The Illinois Music Education Association provides outreach and advocacy events for our state, is our professional organization. In addition to doing all those wonderful things for the professionals, they house auditions for our musicians, district auditions. There are nine sites. All of our students auditioned, were selected for our district festival, and then from there, that district festival, they were selected for our All-State Ensembles. And we have 12 students. First one is Elias Anderson. Sebastian Inghino was unable to attend tonight. David Lee. Matt Newberger. Katie Olson was unable to attend tonight. Thomas Power was selected as our future music educator. Carter Smith. That's very good, okay. You've seen this young man already, he's very talented. Albert Sterner. Karen Tarman. Hurston Townander. And Richard Chow.
Thank you very much, and I now turn it over to my colleague, John Gilliam.
Thank you, Tom. John Gilliam, Principal of Vernon Hills. Welcome, everybody. Our pleasure to also highlight some of our students from our fine performing arts area. We'll start with our musicians, both in voice and music, and then we'll move to our All-State Theater Festival kids. I was fortunate enough to be able to get down to U of I and watch In the Heights this year, and it was a phenomenal show. And the kids that you'll see, that you've already seen from Libertyville, those you'll see from Vernon Hills, made District 128 proud for sure, as did the musicians too. So Drew Russell, our Department Supervisor, is gonna come up. Let's do music, and then we'll do theater, so we can get a full shot of it.
Just do your cheat sheet there. Well, I have all their names memorized, you know, just in case I have this for reference. So before I get started, I wanna say that getting to this level, really, in fine arts or in athletics or in activities is just an unbelievably remarkable accomplishment. And it motivates us as teachers to see students accomplish something like this. But also, we know that there's all sorts of schlepping to lessons and prep rehearsals and hitting coaches and all these sorts of things that have to happen, and money, and time, and energy. And it's just not possible without unbelievable support at home. So, thank you, parents. Thank you so much. Alright, let's get started with our All-State musicians. First up, Voice, Nicole Boris. Next up, Donalee Black. Also Voice. And Jillian Bowes, who cannot attend this evening due to another fine arts commitment, for Voice. Sophie Heiser. Ian Joe, Violin. David Rosales, who is not here this evening for clarinets. And Timmy Zay, Oboe. And next up, people who have provided me with much free entertainment for my family, are All-State Theater students. First up is Mackenzie Furlett, who is in the cast. Then, Sari Gluck, also in the cast. In the pit orchestra, Kyle Johnson. Also in the pit orchestra, unable to attend, Han Americ. In the crew, Isabella Pineda. And also, a student who is in All-State Music, David Rosales, who's unable to attend.
LHS kids that were in the festival, the Theater Fest, let's get a big picture of that. Thank you again, congratulations to everyone, you guys are free to go if you want.
Okay. Student school board representatives, who would like to go first?
Everyone's jumping at once.
Okay. Alright, for Vernon Hills. Okay? So congratulations to Lauren List and Jackson Knishnik on winning the team competition History Bowl Varsity Division, and Lauren List for also winning the individual competition. So great job to Lauren and Jackson. Congratulations to James McDonald for being selected as a member of the All-State Academic Team. James places among the top 26 student athletes in all of Illinois. James will be recognized for his outstanding achievements on April 15th in Bloomington. Last Monday marked Vernon Hills' first ever E-Learning Day. To make up for recent school cancellations, teachers provided assignments for their students to complete during their President's Day. We sent out a survey to the student body to collect feedback about the day itself. We received over 600 responses, with the majority of students saying their workloads were about two to three hours. Although over 80% of the responses said that at least one of their assignments was meaningful, 50% of students believed that the majority of their work seemed like busy work. 80% of students, 80% of responses said that the E-Learning Day was much better than having to add an extra day at the end of the year. Overall, students all put hard work into their assignments, and our first E-Learning Day turned out to be a success. Vernon Hills juniors participated in the 5th Annual History Fair with the theme "Tragedy and Triumph." Hardworking students created documentaries, websites, papers, and exhibits about their chosen events in Chicago's history. 10 projects were selected to move on to regionals at Nows North High School, and hopefully our fellow students will move on to sectionals and state. Two weeks ago, Vernon Hills had their Turnabout. Students danced, played Jango, played Bago, and ate cookies at the 3rd Annual Turnabout. This year, Vernon Hills had its first Turnabout King and Queen, Brett Sweeney and Rachel Wright. Last Thursday, Vernon Hills Band had their Winter Band Concert. The three ensembles performed great pieces for their audience. On Valentine's Day, the VHS Orchestra had their Valentine's Day Concert. Concert and Philharmonic Orchestra performed great pieces to begin the concert. Senior soloist Ellie Zazak topped off the night with her amazing piece that she had been working on for the entire year. And again, congratulations to all of our All-State musicians and Theater students for all of their accomplishments this year.
We wanna say congrats to the Cheer Team. A few weeks ago, the team placed first at the CSL Championships, then went on to place fifth at Sectionals and qualify for State. And at the State Competition, the girls placed 17th. So congrats to all of them. Congrats also to the Palms Team, who placed third at Sectionals to advance to State a few weeks ago. At the State Competition, the team placed 11th both days. So we're so proud of the girls for this accomplishment. Freshman Nia Heinz broke the indoor school record for the long jump last week on her very first jump. Nia jumped an amazing 17 feet and 10 inches to break the record and win the meet. Senior Tyler Gonzalez also broke the school records for indoor track in the 200-meter, 400-meter, and 600-meter in their first two meets of the season. And one of those records was his own previous record. So we're so proud of our athletes that they are all so dedicated and performing so well even this early in the season, and we look forward to hearing about many more outstanding performances. Earlier this month, a group of VHS students went to Snowball along with a group of students from LHS and Barrington High School. It was a great opportunity for the students to meet other people while participating in team activities and learning about healthy lifestyles. Talking to Hannah Rabenowitz, who was one of the leaders this year, she said that she loved planning everything and really bonding with the other students. She said they chose to focus on telling stories because no matter what, everyone has a story. She said all the stories are so different and so incredible, and she's sad it's over but so happy she had the experience. The VHS Winter Play this year was The Complete History of America, which is a show covering 600 years of history in 90 minutes. The show was a comedy featuring singing, acting, and overall amazing performances from all the students. And due to the crazy stretch of cold days, the original three nights of performances was condensed into three performances on two nights, including one matinee show. But even with the shift in performance times, attendance was impressive at the shows, with an extra row of seats having to be added at the final performance. The Spring Play will be The Old Man and the Old Moon, a play written by Pigpen Theater Company, one of whose members is VHS alum Matt Nernberger. Practices have officially started for the play, and everyone involved is very excited. Earlier this month, a talented group of VHS students put on the annual One-X Show. There were six skits involved, and all students performed and directed. Students of all grades were involved, and the immense talent of the students was well displayed. Both shows were well attended, and the shows received positive feedback from both students and community members. In early January, VIP visited the students at Rockland Elementary School and performed skits, ran team building activities, and held lead discussions with the students. The objective of the visit was to send messages about topics like bullying, healthy choices, and growing up. The students were engaged and had fun with their performances, and it was amazing to see so many VHS students sharing their wisdom and making a difference in the lives of younger children. Earlier this month, a group of VHS physics students went to visit 3rd graders at Everett Elementary School in Lake Forest. The trip was organized by Mr. Rush, and the students helped act as advisors to the elementary school students on their catapult projects. Both Mr. Rush and the Science Department Chair, Mr. Proces, commented on the event, calling it a great opportunity and a way to bring the two schools together. The French II classes and pastry arts classes recently joined forces to create a multicultural experience for the students. The French II classes have been learning about French culture and food, and the pastry arts classes have been investigating cuisine around the world. The two classes united to make French pomiers and crepes together and combine their studies. It's so cool to see VHS students and teachers encouraging such multicultural experiences and learning opportunities.
So, this passing weekend, Libertyville had its annual Turnabout Spirit Week, and this year's theme was Astroville. So spirit days included Space Jammy Monday, Total Eclipse Tuesday, Out of This World Wednesday, Attack of the Clones Thursday, and Florissant Friday. On Friday, the school had a blacklight assembly where the student body competed and played games for the competitive spirit trophy, which the seniors took home, making up for their defeat to the juniors at the homecoming assembly earlier this year. There were also performances by the Cheer and Palms Teams, who wore additions to their uniforms to match the lighting. The next night, the students showed up to the dance, where they were treated with a coat check and plenty of water to stay hydrated. This year's Turnabout also included a silent disco, where students could put on headphones and dance in the quiet. This was a huge hit with the students, and it was packed all night long. So in regards to the E-Learning Day, people have received it, the E-Learning Day that happened on the 18th, pretty well overall. The general opinion is that students and teachers alike preferred having the E-Learning Day to coming in for another day of school, whether on President's Day or at the end of the year. Teachers took the E-Learning Day in stride and provided students with helpful supplemental activities for the upcoming week of class, and it worked out perfectly for students who already had plans to either be out of town on family trips or on college visits. So, describing her experience with the E-Learning Day, Jessica Lee, junior, said that, "I don't think teachers were given enough notice about it to develop another day for their lesson plan, but I didn't want to go to school on a designated day off. I think giving us additional work let me feel a lot more productive." Considering that, we think that the first E-Learning Day this year was a huge success. Since spring break, staff members have been visiting and talking to English classes throughout the school about the Green Dot program. Green Dot is a program that teaches students how to step in when they see bullying or any other negative situation throughout the school. These in-class trainings included brainstorming ideas about how to distract or intervene in different scenarios, and using three simple points of delegate, direct, or distract. Students found that it was a very beneficial bystander training program. Students and staff members from Libertyville, Vernon Hills, and Barrington High School attended Snowball on Valentine's Day at Camp McLean in Wisconsin. So as you all just heard, the activity focused around the theme of telling your story. Students also enjoyed participating in small and large group settings, and also enjoyed the chance to play broom ball on the lake. So as long as this winter has strived on, LHS wants to give a huge thank you to all the staff who has been clearing the snow and the ice away so that people can be safe as they get to school. And students are also grateful for simply having heat in their classrooms, and that the later start times work better with circadian rhythms to alleviate the difficulty of getting up during winter mornings. Last week, there were two screenings of the documentary Angst, one at LHS and the other at VHS. The documentary is designed to raise awareness about anxiety, and the event included a panel and an open discussion about issues that pertain to stress, anxiety, and depression, and how these issues are relevant to high schoolers today. To speak to the LHS event, parents who attended found the event to be informative and described it as a good starting point to understand what their kids may be going through, but don't wish to talk about at home. Moving on to athletics. We would like to congratulate the Thundercats, the fencing club and team, on winning at the JV Championship Tournament held at Marion Catholic High School in Woodstock that happened a couple weeks ago. The Thundercats competed against schools in the Great Lakes Fencing Conference, and they're very proud of their win. Swim team just finished their season. Libertyville had two athletes qualify for State in swimming and diving. Isaac Paul placed 33rd for diving, while Lauren Wong finished 32nd for the butterfly. The student body is very proud of these two athletes for their accomplishments. The girls' basketball team also ended their season as the regional championships after falling to Lake Forest. Throughout the season, the girls collected many accolades, including being the conference champions, regional champions, and winners of the Libertyville Winter Classic. The team finished with a final record of 23 to 8, and they're very grateful for the fans that came out to support them. And not to be too redundant, but we want to give another huge congratulations to the two LHS wrestlers who placed at State.
Okay, so for academics, course selection has started. Students who are freshmen, sophomores, or juniors have begun selecting their courses for the next year. One new option that's on students' minds is the Illinois Global Scholar Program. This program encourages students to take classes that will allow students to develop the skills needed to succeed in today's globalized world. During the certificate, scholars must take globally-focused coursework, complete globally-focused service learning, collaborate with others globally, and complete a performance task. It's still in its early stages, so not all globally-centered courses will count towards the certificate, but students are looking forward to how the program may keep growing. So for clubs and activities. The LHS Theater Program just had their long-anticipated Comedy Sports Performance. Comedy Sports is a competitive and interactive improv show. The performances are divided into two teams, red and blue, and compete to get the most audience laudar or applause. There were two snow days, and both of them went incredibly well. While the performers were initially, two show days, and both of them went incredibly well. While the performers were initially worried about how well the show would go, their hours of practice clearly showed and certainly paid off. The academic decathlon team placed second at Regionals, qualifying to compete at State at the Northeastern Illinois University. The team of tennis coached by Mr. Busing, and they're all looking forward to the upcoming challenge. In the last month, the Science Olympiad Team has had great performances across the board at the Huntley Invitational and the Loyola Academy Invitational. At Huntley, Libertyville placed second in Circuit Lab, third in Water Quality, fifth in Protein Modeling, fifth in Astronomy, fifth in Mouskew Vehicle, fifth in Write It Do It, sixth in Disease Detectives, sixth in Geologic Mapping, seventh in Boom Lever, seventh in Fossils, ninth in Forensics, ninth in Fermi Lab, ninth in Herpetology, and tenth in Sounds of Music. At Loyola Academy, Libertyville placed first in Water Quality, fourth in Herpetology, seventh in Write Stuff, eighth in Geologic Mapping, tenth in Astronomy, Disease Detectives, and Fermi Questions. They also debuted the Mission Possible Root Goldberg Machine for the first time, earning sixth place at a tournament with over 40 teams present. The team is now preparing for the Regional Tournament on March 9th to qualify for the State Tournament this April, which will be held at the University of Illinois at Urbana-Champaign. The Libertyville Math Team also had an incredible showing last Saturday at the ICTM Regional Math Competition. The team managed to place third with a freshman-sophomore eight-person team winning first place and qualifying for State. The team is already hard at work, preparing for the North Suburban Math League Conference Meet this March. The Model United Nations Club had their Winter Travel Conference in January at Columbia University in New York. The small group of 12 who attended had an overwhelmingly positive experience in exploring the city and the university campus, and they're grateful that their two advisors, Mr. Wall and Ms. Bosman, were able to come. Everyone did well in their committees, with topics ranging from Avatar to Brexit, and six students got awards. Drew Hopkins received Best Delegate, while Allison McLean and Madeline Coons received Outstanding Delegate. Katherine Corless received an honorable mention, and Cooper Loonsbury received a verbal commendation. Finally, this passing week, the LHS Jazz Ensemble and the Jazz Lab Band formed four residents of Libertyville Manor. Both of them performing their swing pieces wonderfully, and the residents loved it.
Matthew, who was on that first-place Water Quality team?
I was one of the hundred.
Oh!
Alright, great job, everybody. And in between all of that, there was time to do your regular schoolwork, right? Alright, great job, thank you. All right, great job, thank you. Okay, I'm gonna make one other comment. Earlier this month in our committee meeting, we had a chance to tour the new pool in Libertyville. And I don't know about the rest of you guys, but after five or more years of planning, starting to finally see this thing, it was actually an amazing experience. No question, the first feeling you get is, it is huge. And it is gonna be just a great asset, I think, not only for our own campus in Libertyville, but I hope for all the residents in town as well. And I think once people see it, it will clearly be a facility that was well worth waiting for. So I want to say a special thanks to you two guys, because I know how hard you're working on that as well as all these other projects. And also to the Gilbane team, who gave us a great tour. You also get a special appreciation for frankly how complicated that kind of construction project is and the talent that it takes to really make it all happen. So I just want to make a public thanks to the Gilbane team and all the hard work that they're doing there. So it's getting exciting. It will still be ready this spring, which takes us right up until, what, June 20th?
June 20th.
But no, great job so far. All right, Superintendent's Report, sir.
Thank you, Pat. We do have good news to cover from January that we didn't cover at the last board meeting and some from February. So the beginning of January, D-128 Special Olympians competed in the snowshoeing at the area winter games at Huffington Estates High School. Andrew McCarthy, Nathan Ferreira, Haley Dunbar, Sean Karanen, and Alex Akende collected three golds, one silver, four bronze, and a fourth and fifth place ribbons. Haley and Nathan qualified for the state games and competed there. Nathan placed second in the 50-meter snowshoe. Our LHS Jazz Combo Lab Band and Jazz Ensemble, along with Directors Met Karnson and Dave Ness, performed at the North Shore Jazz Fest on Saturday, January 19th. All three groups received a rating of one, which is the highest score that is given. LHS students Thomas Power in guitar and John Power in drums both received solo awards. Students received clinics from professional musicians Victor Garcia, Vince Johnson, and Dave Tippett. Vernon Hills High School English teacher Tara Young received the Stanford University Teacher Tribute. Kelsey Carrito is a Vernon Hills 2018 grad who's given the opportunity to formally acknowledge an educator who played a significant role in her intellectual, academic, and personal development. The certificate reads in part that Tara Young is recognized by Stanford University for exceptional teaching. Your dedication as an educator and a mentor has contributed to the future of your students, Stanford University, and your community. Also included on the certificate is part of the nomination that was written by Kelsey. Congratulations to Tara. The following students were named January True Wildcat Award recipients for the ways in which they embody the daring mission and live the life of a wildcat. Olivia Cherry, Paula Magnazewski, Amanda Page, Enrique Aguar, Olivia Godin, Alexander Black, David Lee, and Anna Schuler. Vernon Hills High School art students and their teacher Allison Malloy once again participated in the Memory Project. And if you remember from last year, they came and presented at a board meeting. So the Memory Project again is a charitable, nonprofit organization that invites art teachers, art students, and solo artists to help cultivate global kindness by creating portraits for children around the world who have faced substantial challenges such as violence, war, extreme poverty, neglect, and loss of parents. So since 2004, we have created more than 130,000 portraits for children in 47 countries. A larger number of Vernon Hills student artists were able to participate this year, due in part to the funding from Innovation Grant from the District 128 Foundation for Learning. So this year's portraits were sent to children in the Philippines, Bangladesh, Myanmar, and Syria. Malloy plans to have 25 portraits completed this spring and seven more from the VHS AP Class for the United States of America. The following VHS juniors and seniors participated in the project. Going to the Philippines, Lee Jodila, Drew Laser, Rachel Hayden, Sasha Shore, and Kiona Kashrow. For Bangladesh, Leah Hayden, Sneha Akarati, Olivia Sheldon, Hannah Robinowitz, Rachel Hayden, and then Allison Malloy, the teacher. For Syria, Lily Meng. So congratulations to those students. So some more good news, still just a repeat about James McDonald, Vernon Hills High School senior, that he was selected the IHSA All-State Academic Team. Again, this honor places James among the top 26 student athletes in the state of Illinois. Congratulations to him. LHS senior Maggie Evers has been named the 2018 Daughters of the American Revolution Good Citizen Award winner. And fellow LHS senior Thomas Pearson has been named the 2018/19 Sons of the American Revolution Good Citizen Award winner. 12 Vernon Hills students received the February Allen Swift Cougar Class Act Award. This month's honorees were Natalia Veloah, Hannah Robinowitz, Avery Hassel.
I'm sorry, could you repeat that last name?
Avery Hassel.
Oh, thank you.
Tyler Queen, Farnoosh Ganjipur, Rachel Wright, Rebecca Agnew, Hala Abdulzarek, Navinta Santukumar, Drishka Asher, Tyler Tran, and Alexis Garcia. And in February, the LHS students were named True Wildcats. Sophia Thompson, Quinn Ramstead, Isabel Turco, Kyle Boe, Chase Miller, Kara Cannon, Ally Hardy, Peyton Goas, Michael O'Brien, Elias Anderson, and Alisa Waddick, Cece Schneider, and Jalen Pitts. Artwork by 10 D-128 student artists were selected from the 25 Best of the Best Works from the LHS and Vernon Hills High School Art Departments for the Illinois High School Art Exhibition, the General Exhibition for 2018/19. This is one of Illinois' premier high school art exhibitions, featuring student visual artworks from high schools across northern Illinois. The General Exhibition is a Best of the Best competition developed by teachers to recognize high school students' artistic excellence. The students that were selected for the exhibit in Vernon Hills, Sneha Akarati, Autumn Maitush, Lily Meng, Ervy Achara, Anne Marie Landis, and from Libertyville, Kelsey Collins, Bridget Wilson, Jackie Vu, Leanne Tam, and Emily Detlaff. On February 22nd, Vernon Hills FCCLA Club members competed at the regional competition at Harper College. All students received gold or silver medals and qualified for state in their respective areas, which included cookie decorating, salad demonstration, and children's literature storytelling. The Vernon Hills High School State Qualifiers are Andrea Mata, Adriana Alonso, Austin Maskey, Myra Jeremilo, Rachel Wright, Diamond Williams, Emily Viatoli, Riley Goldberg, Alexandra Schmidt, Abby Kamai, Katie Hoffman, Brittany Jamie, and Lauren Di Pietro. And that concludes the Superintendent's Good News Report. Moving on to pool and parking update, Mark and Dan.
Hi, well, since you last toured the pool, we've had some progress. They've been working on the interior masonry. We've completed all the interior masonry walls in the east section mechanical rooms. They've also started covering the columns in the main pool area. So on the west end, those columns are done. They're working on the south columns at this time this week. We continued the installation of the forms for the bleachers. So when you toured the pool, now from end to end, the stands are all up and you can see the forms come together. It'll be a couple weeks more of work there. We started setting electrical equipment, the main distribution panels and that, in the mechanical room, the electrical room. And the big thing is, we got all the equipment out of the pool vessel, removed the ramp, and cleaned the vessel, and the vessel, as of today, is full of water. So we are doing a leak test at this time. So for approximately three days, we're gonna check the water, make sure we don't have any leaks, and from there, drain it. Approximately 700,000.
And just to clarify, with water in it, it does look definitely smaller, once you add the water. In terms of our budget, we're a tad over half spent in the budget, but we're gonna be spending a lot more money in the next few months. But as of where we're sitting right now, everything is on track budget-wise. We understood, yep. We're gonna spend almost all of it.
Okay, any questions on the pool?
Next, we have an update on the LHS and VHS major capo projects. Update on the process, Dan?
Yeah, so I don't know if you can tell Jeff is over here, he is more tired than he looks. It's been a very, very busy couple of weeks for Gilbane and for the district in getting these out to bid and coming in. We had two bid openings so far. One this past Tuesday, which two of our board members, Casey and Lisa, were able to be there and kind of see what that really looks like, and it was interesting to see. So we had a number of trades open on Tuesday. We had, pretty early on, we knew and we'd been talking about this at several meetings, there's a busy bid market happening right now, and so there's a lot of contractors are being asked to bid on various projects, and so a lot of them have been asking for more time. And so we really want to have a good showing of bidders, and so we've been trying to accommodate that as much as we can. So we've had a number of bids move, as Casey and Lisa saw, we had some that moved till this past Friday. We still have two more?
Two more packages this week.
Two more packages this week, one Tuesday, one Friday?
Yes.
Yep, so we're still not, we thought maybe at this point we would have all of the bids in, we don't actually have them all in at this time. So that's just kind of what's been happening. So in terms of the numbers that we have, we still need to have Gilbane be able to kind of go through the scope and look at the bids. So we really have the numbers that we have, and the short story is, everything looks like it's within budget for the project. But what Gilbane's supposed to do is go through the scope reviews with each of the bidders and make sure with the lowest bidder that their scope, that the scope that we requested is comprehensively represented in the budget. For example, was it this morning, we had one of the low bids?
The electrician realized they had made an error and they asked to have their bid withdrawn.
So that was the low bid for the electrician that they had theirs withdrawn. And we kind of had the sense, because when you read the numbers and you hear one that's a lot lower than the other one, you kind of think, maybe there's something weird there. So we've been trying to take those things into account. So they still need to kind of go through their process, because there could be another bid in there that, you know, once the contractor kind of realizes the scope, maybe there's something out there. So we want to make sure we have that time to do that effectively. So where it stands right now is, and the other, quite honestly, the thing that we need to do is really trying to compare our apples to apples. So when we had estimated these projects, we really estimated Vernon Hills and LHS separate. We had different design teams doing all kinds of stuff. One thing, we decided to bid it together to save on economy. One thing we didn't really do at that time is put the bid, I mean, we did the totals together, we didn't put each of the trades together to then compare, okay, we got the electric bid, how's that compared to what we estimated? Well, we kind of have two different numbers that we need to combine, so we had to kind of spend some time organizing that and comparing to see where we're coming in, over and under in various lengths. Because you're always gonna have some bids are over, some bids are under, and all of that. But at this point, we do look like that we're within budget, and it looks like that we perhaps would be able to do alternate one, which was the faculty workroom at VHS in the courtyard, and still be within budget. But we, I can't say all of that for sure until we really kind of dig and review the numbers. Because that really, the biggest bulk of the rest of the bids happened on Friday afternoon, which was like just yesterday business-wise. So we're still kind of working through all of those things. So at this point, what we had talked about several meetings up to this far, which is now we're kind of realizing is, if you notice, we don't have any bids to approve at this meeting, which, you know, for the community, we've been talking about our schedule and that we would look at bids today. However, we do feel that Gilbane needs to have the opportunity to spend a little more time to flush these bids out. So at this point, what we would look at recommending is have it scheduled in a special board meeting on Monday, March?
Fourth.
Fourth, sorry, just wanted to, fourth, to accept as many of the bids as we can. And then if there are still some struggling, that we would do them perhaps at the FNF meeting, or that night, the March 11th, which was our normal committee meeting, scheduling a special meeting to accept any ones that they can't really get through in the next week. Is that an accurate statement, Jeff?
Yes, absolutely.
Yeah, so I think that was everything that I think of that I have prepared. So I don't know, any questions that you have at this point, or questions about the process? Jeff's here, can answer a lot of questions.
I just, you know, ultimately, you want to get it right. You want to get all the efficiencies operationally that you can, if you can, get those through the two schools and the two bids. You know, that's part of the reason that we said, hey, let's look at these together, because it makes sense to do these projects. So, you know, I'm all for it, let's move it along, but at the same time, I'm fine with basically taking the time, making sure we get the right bids, with the right viewpoint as it relates to the work that's being done, et cetera.
Yeah, to be clear, so what we're not faced with, we're not facing the bids that are coming in, and it looks like that we are over anything that we've estimated. So that's the real positive thing to take at this point. The question will be kind of how close are we to that line? That's something we really need to still get a better handle on in terms of looking at all those components.
Any other surprises or anything as going through this process that you didn't think would happen or anything?
Generally, we're very pleased with the bids. Me and the contractors were all pre-qualified with Gilbane, we've done work with virtually all of them in the past, and most of the low bidders are very good firms, so we're confident going forward, we're gonna have the right people doing the work.
Thanks. Any issues with the availability of resources? I mean, is it a hot market?
It's a hot market. I mean, the good thing about this project is it goes through the summer and through the school year, so contractors were interested in that, because it's not a summer slammer, as we call it. So other than trying to get some of the work done at Vernon Hills and get the demolition done at Libertyville, this is an attractive project, so we're pretty confident that people have the manpower that they need.
All right, so March 4th. March 4th, we would like to have a special meeting to approve as many of these bids as we will have ready from Gilbane, which we anticipate would be a bulk of them for sure, at the March 4th special meeting.
And how much ahead of time will we have to review that stuff? Not that there's, I mean, we're not gonna do any kind of technical review, but...
You know, I mean, some of it, Gilbane and I have to kind of touch base with numbers, but I would love to be able to get you something if I can, you know, midweek, maybe Thursday or so to get you something, so you've got...
Because last time I looked, I believe March 4th is a week from today.
It is, it is. So it's a tight timeline for Gilbane, too, they know that, but they also recognize it's important to get the contractors, I've noticed that we're ready, because really, some of the work they'd like to start in spring break.
I just say, hey, get it right. Like I said before, get it right. Because we do have a committee meeting a week after. Because we do have a committee meeting a week later, right?
Right.
You know, unless I'm missing something, I'm not sure that one week's gonna make a huge difference.
Yeah, I just need to be able to give you kind of a financial analysis that I don't really have available for you this time, but I'm, you know, really working on this.
You get the gist. Do what you need to do and do it right.
But Jeff, what's your thought? I mean, if we pushed even to the committee meeting, is that a bad idea, or what do you think?
Yeah, I'd like to get contractors on board as early as we can, so they can get shop drawings going and get material and equipment ordered. You know, but we, you know, the packages that we got Friday were some of the important ones, the structure, the masonry, the electrical. They may take a little more time, so we may have to push it a week, and I'm fine with that. I don't think it's gonna affect us overall on the schedule.
Trust your judgment, you guys get longer on it, but I mean, if it's meaningful to get the contractors going, I'd rather get it going, but I trust your judgment on...
We're prioritizing which packages we're talking to first, so we can go through those packages and get them resolved. And if we can get the structure and probably the mechanical and electrical work, I would like to come in, but we'll revisit that. You know, again, we, like Dana's saying, we need the overall package of the finances so you can make an informed decision.
You got a post-op meeting Friday for open meeting, special meeting?
Forty-eight hours ahead of time, so...
Those of us that are here, is anyone, I'm not, I'm out of town on that night, so are the rest of you available on the 4th?
I'm available.
I'm available.
If needed, I could phone in, but I think as long as...
If needed, I could phone in, but I think as long as we have a forum, we should be okay.
We should know something by Wednesday or Thursday this week to make that determination, then, right?
I think absolutely. And Dan, will we be able to see the whole picture? I know it's still kind of preliminary, but I mean, we'll be able to see this thing in total? That's my goal. So you see, so before, we've spent a lot of time on the estimates and looking at the numbers and what's included, what's not included. My goal is to give you, like, this is the total and all, everything, nothing left out number. Okay, so, all right.
That I'm sure is keeping you guys extreme, Danny.
Thank you. Jeff, thank you for coming today.
Mark hasn't even had time to shake. I mean, that's how bad it is. Either of you, by the way. I got a trip. Okay.
We have three FOIA requests. First one was from January 28th from Amanda Marquez, and that was handled by myself with an hour spent on it. February 13th, we had a FOIA request from Jennifer Marquez, she had a couple requests on that one. Time spent, again, by myself, it was six hours on that FOIA request. February 18th was another FOIA request by Jennifer Marquez on some communication records. Time spent on that was by me again, an hour spent on that one.
And Brian, what's your feel? Are we going to get a continuing list of these? This looks like a huge fishing expedition, frankly, to me.
At this point, you know, we're trying to abide by the FOIA laws and the FOIA requests, and we are doing everything that we believe and our attorneys believe is correct in answering to the FOIA request. So, you know, we're doing everything that we can to the best of our ability.
Okay. Brett, any else?
That's it.
Okay. All right, the consent vote agenda is listed. This is what we reviewed earlier this month in committee. Can I ask for a motion to approve the consent vote agenda as listed?
I motion to approve the consent vote agenda as listed.
Second. Any discussion? Roll call, please.
Batson.
Aye.
Rudy.
Aye.
Hassel.
Aye.
Excuse me. Luz.
Aye.
Rudy.
Aye.
Our motion carries. Facilities and Finance Chairperson Luz.
Yeah, we have four items here that I think require an action on our part. We reviewed these in committee, and the first is the 2018 Comprehensive Annual Financial Report. It was a little bit delayed, if you remember, from committee, because of the information we had to get from the state. But Dan, you want to talk about that a little bit?
Yep, it was delayed based on, it delayed pretty much every district in the state, but because we have a caper, which is kind of an additional layer in comprehensiveness, that required more time. So it's here, ready for approval, and, yeah.
All right, so do I have a motion to approve the Comprehensive Annual Financial Report?
So moved.
Second.
Any questions or discussion?
Just again, I'll highlight, we talked about this in detail in the committee meeting, in case anybody thinks we just...
Went through it in depth, yes. Okay, roll call.
Rudy.
Aye.
Hassel.
Aye.
Luz.
Aye.
Lundstedt, I'm sorry. Rooney.
Aye.
Batson.
Aye.
Okay. Mobile Makers Addendum Vernon Hills High School.
Again, something we discussed in committee. Last year, the board approved a contract with Mobile Makers for the curriculum for the Mobile Makers class, curriculum?
Curriculum.
Thank you, sorry. And so Vernon Hills is looking to add that for next year, and so it requires also downturn to an agreement with them. The nice thing is, we can just amend the current contract, we have it at ALGES, and we'll leave Vernon Hills in, so it's very, very simple. And so we can keep all the same legal terms, we don't have to negotiate on them again, so it's pretty simple.
Okay, do I have a motion to approve the addendum for the Mobile Makers program at Vernon Hills?
So moved. Second.
I'm willing to bet that's a pretty popular course, actually.
We have a number of offerings in computer science, though that is one that is of interest to students, and we've got a lot of students taking the AP Computer Science courses as well.
Any questions or dialogue or... All right. Can we have a roll call, please?
Hassel.
Aye.
Luz.
Aye.
Rooney.
Aye.
Batson.
Aye.
Rudy.
Aye.
The third item is bid recommendations for 2019 Masonry Restorations Work. So this is brickwork that's part of our ongoing capital improvement projects. So this is separate from these larger projects that are coming in reserve. This is part of regular maintenance that is required on both buildings. We review these bids. Is there anything else, Dan and Ann, on these? We went through this as a committee.
Yeah, we would just like to make a recommendation that the board accept the bid from Grove Masonry Maintenance Incorporated in Elsop, Illinois, in the amount of $880,000 for the work to be done at Libertyville and Vernon Hills High School.
We have a motion to approve, the bid is presented by Mark.
So moved.
Second.
Pick one.
Any dialogue or questions? Discussion? Roll call, please.
Luz.
Aye.
Rooney.
Aye.
Batson.
Aye.
Rudy.
Aye.
Hassel.
Aye.
And the last item for decision here is disposal of obsolete equipment. This is a washer and dryer, we talked about this at committee too.
We did, and the reason, so similar to PMP, if something comes in after our FNF committee, but something that we really, really feel needs to get on the agenda for approval.
Did we have something else on that committee?
We did, that was a planer that you had approved in the consent agenda.
Got it.
Earlier this meeting, and so this equipment, rather than having to wait another month, it's going to sit there, and they would really like to get rid of it, so that's really why we have it there, for sure.
Do I have a motion to vote for the disposal of equipment?
So moved.
Second.
Any discussion, dialogue? Roll call.
Rooney.
Aye.
Batson.
Aye.
Rudy.
Aye.
Hassel.
Aye.
Luz.
Aye.
Anything for other?
Okay. Program personnel, Chairperson Batson.
Thank you, Dr. Rudy. We have two items here, curriculum course name changes. There's two actual changes, moving from AP Seminar to AP Seminar minus English, and from AP Research to AP Research hyphen English.
We're recommending this change to the curriculum, because a number of universities recognize the AP Seminar and AP Research courses for elective credit, rather than the English credit that we award. And so to clarify, to universities and to those reviewing transcripts, that this is an English credit offered at our schools, we're just adding that English to the name, to an existing college board AP course that we offer, two courses.
This comes up every once in a while, where there's a name, and there's an AP, and we're having to, I won't say argue with the university or a college, but have discussions about their interpretation, correct?
Many universities view AP courses differently and award different kinds of credit for those courses. AP Seminar and Research are really interesting interdisciplinary courses, and they are offered at different high schools for different kinds of credit. It can be social studies credit, it can be science credit, so this one is a little bit unique in that regard, because it is something that can be interdisciplinary and offered in different ways at high schools, more so than some of the other AP courses are.
And this doesn't change anything with the curriculum of the course?
Just the name.
Just the name, to better identify what that, really, what it means to us.
Yes.
Okay. All right, any other, can we have a motion in a second, please?
I motion to approve the curriculum course name changes.
Second.
Any further questions, comments? Nope. Can we have a roll call, please?
Batson.
Aye.
Rudy.
Aye.
Hassel.
Aye.
Luz.
Aye.
Rooney.
Aye.
Batson.
Aye.
Thank you, that motion passes. We have a motion for employment of employees, we have a short list of some coaches and some ESP staff replacements.
These all came in after our PMP committee meeting, and we'd like to get these approved at this board meeting.
We have a motion, please.
So moved. Second.
Any questions or comments on this? Okay, thank you. Can we have a roll call, please?
Rudy.
Aye.
Hassel.
Aye.
Luz.
Aye.
Rooney.
Aye.
Batson.
Aye.